Are we ready? We'll call the meeting to order, please, if you stand for the pledge. Adrian, anyone do roll call, please?
Tonya David.
Here.
Brian Rommel.
Here.
Libby Wyatt.
Here.
Brits Benz.
Here.
Sean Morgan.
Here.
We have a quorum. And we do have an amendment to the agenda tonight. And we'll be opening and closing a public meeting for the additional appropriation. So I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to change tonight's agenda and add a public meeting prior to the appropriation as a vote of the appropriation of the budget.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And looking to approve the minutes from October 6th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from October 6th, 2025.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so first up, old business, we have consider the approval of the 2026 budget presented by Beth Marsh.
Okay. So we've, you know, had the presentation, we had the public hearing your last meeting for the budget. So tonight, basically, we just need an approval for the budget. The total budget with all funds is $7,41,451. Keep in mind, because I know this is always a question some people ask, is about the salary resolution. This budget allows for the approval for salaries, but you're not approving salaries tonight. The salary resolution will be coming in the next month or so. I know Joe's working on that now. And also keep in mind in this budget, when you look at that, there are 27 pays in next year. So there'll be some of that. And then we've also had some salary adjustments for trying to bring the officers up to a higher rate so that they're more competitive. And there's even been some talk of even doing some of the other departments, just because we're losing people because of the rate. So just know that as far as that goes. Any questions?
No.
I don't think so. And we need, looking for a motion to approve? Not for this, no, not for this part.
This is the approval of the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And next up, we have the consideration for an additional appropriation within the budget. This is, yeah, this is the public meeting.
I'd like a motion to close the council meeting and open a public hearing.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so for the public hearing, we're proposing an additional appropriation for the cumulative capital development fund for capital outlays, which is 215,000. And what that is, is money that we have set aside for projects that we've been waiting for it to happen. And finally, this year, they have. So we have the cash and everything for that. And these are for roads and for the improvements, and it's the matching portion of what we have to have. We've already had some appropriated, but this was some additional that we needed that we were able to do. So that's what the 215,000 is for. So I don't know if there's any questions from you or the public?
Public. Just where, where is the, the roads and stuff that's going to be appropriated to?
Those, those roads are already done. This is actually a part of the community crossing grant that we received. This 24 is when we applied and received the funds. Started doing the paving this year. That was pretty much all of Timber Ridge. Everything got paved, milled. Some of the sidewalks and curbs got replaced. The additional funds, I know at the, when it was a couple council meetings ago, council approved, I think it was another $160,000 for additional sidewalks throughout town that were in pretty bad disrepair that needed to be upgraded. Reason for that is typically we can go 20% over a contract amount. So, so the 160 was the 20%. So without going out to rebid it again, everything we were able to add to that contract and then go ahead and do some additional walks in town.
Public, have any comment? Okay.
Need to close it.
Yeah.
Uh, make a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we'll need a motion to approve the appropriation.
Make a motion to approve the additional appropriation resolution of $215,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need to sign too, don't you, the appropriation here? Okay. That needs a signature. And this too. Make sure you put it on the right side. Okay, next up, we have the consideration to appeal to exceed the maximum allowable tax levy.
So we've applied for, which we've talked about, we've applied for an additional maximum levy because of the growth in the town. And we, within the budget, I've already allocated $400,000 for that. But we also have to file this appeal as well for that. And so I've allocated 400,000 and we anticipate that we should get $366,907. And that is for growth, which is basically for additional staff, officers and things like that. So it's not, it's for keeping sustainability, things that we need on a continuing basis, which there's plenty of need for that. So that's.
So this will be the last year we can do this, right?
Correct. That's why it's important that we do that this year, because it is the last year that's allowable since legislature changed.
Unless something happens before that.
But as of right this second.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, so this is a levy. Then again, for the state, like we're basically asking the state for this money.
Yeah, based on our growth, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the appeal to exceed the maximum allowable tax levy. $366,000, or $366,907.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll sign that to you.
You need to send this to me tomorrow.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, next step, we'll have the council consider the adoption of resolution number 2025 nine, what'd you say? Nine B? Can be. Sorry. The fiscal plan for Shogren and annexation at 8683 North Fortville Pike.
All right. Excuse me. For the record, I'm Adam Zachlikowski, the planning and billing director. For this particular item, if you recall, this is already going to a public hearing. You already had a first reading on this. So now, under state law, you have to approve a fiscal plan for every annexation, even in this case where it's purely voluntary. In this case, there's just one house on one lot. You still need to approve that resolution of a fiscal plan. So once you adopt that, then you're free to adopt the annexation ordinance if you so choose. And then the ordinance needs to be published in the paper. And after 30 days has passed, then we can record it with the county. And then that's when it's officially within town limits. So if you have any questions on the fine print of the fiscal plan, I'd be more than happy to address those questions. Thanks.
Any questions? Anybody have questions?
I have a question, not so much about the, uh, the, the plan or the resolution, but more about the numbering on the ordinance or on the agenda. Because it looks like this one is already earmarked for 10A. And as you look down the agenda, there's one for 10B and then 10C. I don't know if you that one was skipped. Okay. So then, yeah, make note on your agenda then as you go through to change those A, Bs and Cs as you go.
So this is 10B, the next one will be 10C.
Correct.
Or can promotion?
I just wanted to see if you have any questions.
I guess not.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve uh, resolution number 2025-10B, the fiscal plan for the Shogren annexation at 8683 North Fortville Pike.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries? So the next, do we, um, are we supposed to be signing these?
Yes.
That's what I thought. There's no sticking on here, but, okay. Make sure I keep the paperwork together here. Okay, next up, we have to consider the second reading of ordinance 2025-8A, the Shogren annexation.
It's just continuation of the same thing.
Right, well, we've already looked at it, yeah.
And then this is the actual.
The actual annexation, yeah. Think I have any questions about that? I'll make a motion to approve second reading of ordinance, uh, 2025-8A, the Shogren annexation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I just, I see I did it in the wrong place. You gotta pay attention to this thing. They switched sides.
You need a clean copy?
That's okay. I just scribbled it out. Put my initial on it. If you want a clean copy, if you don't like my scribble. Sorry.
Yeah.
You do that. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So next step, we have the consideration of resolution number 2025-10C, the fiscal plan for Innovations, Oning Innovations Annexation at 7795 North 200 West.
So for this one, um, one thing that's interesting is, first, the reason, um, that they wanted to annex is because they want to take advantage of the town sewer that is near the Mount Vernon Schools complex. And so because this is a commercial slash industrial property, you know, the assessed value between the two parcels is about 3.6 million. So, um, the the town may receive an additional $29,000 per year in property tax revenue from this property alone. So, and in the fiscal plan, we have to mention what's going to happen over the next four years and they, uh, we could collect as much as 120,000 off of this property alone, so. But with that, if you have any questions on that annexation.
Do we know how much flow they're, they're going to be bringing to the, to the sewer system?
I don't believe we know that 100% at this point. I know that Joe has been working with them to try to figure out where to connect the sewer to exactly, how much that's going to cost, but I defer to Joe.
I will. It's not a significant amount. I mean, it's, it's something that our plant can obviously handle.
He just raised his hand.
Oh, do you, you know where to pop your head? I couldn't remember. Yeah. Okay. And I will say that they are actually extending, they're going through the engineering phases now to extend the water and sewer from the north side of 234 down to their property so that they can, um, connect to the town's utilities. And that's something that will be coming back, I'm sure, um, as all those utilities get, um, priced out and they get bids on it, they will work out some kind of a reimbursement with them to help fund or reimburse them as, as development starts to happen beyond, then they can get some credits or something back for that.
And then with it being industrial, is there, I guess, what's the likelihood that if anything else goes in there that they'd be dumping fat oil, grease?
Fog?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a, that's something that we'll just have to watch on a case by case basis. If, if they, you know, sell out and there's a company going in there, say they're, you know, don't want to get everybody riled up or anything, but a butcher, you know, or slaughterhouse or something like that, then yeah, by all means, there will be different reviews and we'll be looking at that case by case.
I mean, is there anything that they're dumping now that's, I guess, their, their current sewer system is not working then, or?
Right, yeah, their current sewers not working, they're septic, and they don't have the ground to, um, expand. And if you would like to get. Am I to understand then pretty much all the thing you put through the sewers is all the restrooms and the, yeah, normal. Normal.
Any other questions?
No. Right good?
I think we're good.
I will make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-10C, the fiscal plan for Oning Innovations Annexation at 7795 North 200 West.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? She carries?
And any questions about the actual annexation either? I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2025-8B, the Oning Innovations Annexation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So next up, we have the consideration of the adoption of resolution number 2025-10D, fiscal plan for the Stokes Annexation on US 36 and 300 West.
All right, so for this, uh, last annexation, uh, this is the largest in terms of acreage. It is almost 121 acres. Um, and the reason that the owner wanted to annex the property is he'd like to sell the property. Uh, it's farmland right now. And, uh, because of where it's located geographically, there's a high likelihood that somebody will want to develop it. So, um, in annexing, then he, they're able to take advantage of water and sewer. So it would be the next property owner, most likely, that would be able to take advantage of those services. But that was the big impetus for wanting to annex. And the only other piece of note on this one is they are amenable to zoning it in a way that's consistent with the comprehensive plan map. But in order to do that, we're going to take that through a separate rezone process so that the public can weigh in on it. And it's basically what the law calls for in a scenario like that. So it would, um, likely be pending what the plant commission wants to do and what you want to do ultimately. We would envision a mixture of uses, multifamily residential, single family residential, some light industrial and some commercial. And so, um, we will be putting together a legal description. We've asked our engineer to put together a legal description that will map out those areas. But the bottom line is, in your ordinance here right now, it says that the, uh, in regards to the zoning, it says that section four, the annexation territory shall be zoned at a later date based upon a review by the plant commission. So, um, that'll probably come before you in, in November and maybe wrapped up in, uh, December. So, uh, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those as well. Thank you.
I have no questions. Any questions?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of resolution number 2025-10D, a fiscal plan for the Stokes Annexation at US 36 and 300 West.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
And then finally, the, I'll make a motion to consider this, to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2025-8C, the Stokes Annexation.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries? We have no new business. Next, we have departments. Joe?
Yeah, I got a few items here to update everybody on. Andy, did you want to do an update on the leaf pickup or did you want me? Our leaf pickup this year, we've, uh, scheduled two dates for the south side of Stat Street and the north side of Stat Street. So on the south side of Stat, Stat Street, we'll be picking up leaves November 3rd and November 24th. And on the north side, it'll be November 5th and November 26th. And leave should be out by six in the morning and in paper bags. And we'll have our crews go out picking those up and we're going to get some dumpsters ordered up so we can start, um, filling it. Guys will be busy keeping that street sweeper running. Street sweeper's, uh, knock on wood, it's, uh, in pretty good shape right now and it's been out quite a bit. And hopefully it'll be able to help get those drains, keep those drains clean before we get a lot of big rains on them. Just wanted to bring you up, you know, kind of up to date on some of the, uh, with the meeting, um, next few meetings, rather, we got four more meetings this year. And with the budget being approved and the annexations, I'm, I'll be updating the road miles to end dot. That's something that I've got till the very end of the year to give them all of our new road miles, which the annexation, new development and all that stuff comes into play for that. And I believe there's a, just one form, I think the council president signs off on on that. Pays or ratings for all the road work, um, that's due by 12/1 back to end dot. This will be the last year that our guys will be able to do that without being certified. So going forward, you have to be certified to rate the condition of the roads. That seems pretty simple. I mean, they've got 10 categories and it explains it very clear on how you rate them. But, uh, they want to make sure everybody's certified that's doing it. They're going to come out and do some, uh, test different areas to compare how their ratings are versus our ratings. But that'll all be a 26 thing, but, uh, we do still have to have that done. That's how we get our, uh, community crossing grant funds. I wasn't planning on doing any grants this next year for the paving, but we still want to do that every year, make sure we have those pays or ratings turned in on an, on an annual basis, so. We'll be closing out the, uh, community crossing projects that we've currently got open. That'll be, I think they've got one more invoice to send us on that. We have to wait till, uh, we pay them and the check is cleared. And I've got that check to show that they've received their funding before I can close that out. But I'm shooting for getting that done before the end of the year. Again, with the additional subdivisions and stuff going in, updating the parking ordinance. As you know, that'll be in ordinance that'll come before you two more times. I like to do that before the end of the year. And then we also have to update the stop streets, the preferential streets, you know, for the stops, uh, stop signs and intersections with the new development going in. The RDC approved the $1.7 million for landmark park improvements at the counter at the RDC meeting the other night. So I know Reynolds Construction's working on that. They're going to try to get some numbers together. And then, uh, it'll be going back to RDC to kind of give them a not to proceed number as soon as they, uh, or not to exceed, I'm sorry, not to bring, um, just to make sure that, you know, everybody's good with where we're at on the funding. And since the budget is now approved, we'll be working on the salary ordinance. And again, that's something that'll take two readings, um, that we'll be bringing back to you folks pretty soon. Sometimes here in November, when the, uh, water demand goes down a little bit, hopefully we're not irrigating and we get the demand to go down. We're going to be shutting the plant down for a few hours to, um, upload more media into the softeners or into the filters, the filter media. So we've got, I think there's 14 pallets out here in the garage of this building that, uh, we needed to dry place to store it until they have an opportunity to put them in. So we're hoping that, uh, they, we get a little rain and the irrigation stops and we're able to do that. Want to let you know that we, uh, we hired back Ryan French. He was one of the young guys that was working in, uh, street and utility department. Went and got his water certification, distribution certification, was a great worker. great worker. We was hoping to go a long way with him. He was chasing the funds, went somewhere else to make more money. And as it turns out, once the sewer and water plant superintendent position came available, it pays more than what it does back there. So he was wanting to come back. So I feel very fortunate that we're able to get him back. Then we've also hired a gentleman by the name of Christopher Waller. He'll start next Monday. So looking forward to getting him on, on, on the team. And we still have one position open, so. That's all I've got. That's my rundown for the evening. If you have any questions for me? I, I heard you want to be out here by seven, so I was trying to go fast.
Any questions for Joe?
No.
Thank you.
Adam, you have anything?
Nothing for me unless you have any questions on anything.
I'm just curious where we're at on the contract for Placer.
Oh. Well, let's see. We are going to have a meeting with them
Tomorrow.
tomorrow. Their attorney effectively slowed down the process. So but I'm sure we'll be able to come up with, we'll be able to solve the issues. They weren't insurmountable. But as soon as, as soon as we have that meeting with Alex and their attorney and get it solved, then we should be able to get that online.
Okay. Good. That's all I got. He's not here. Patrick's not here?
No.
Anything for your department, Adriana?
Nope.
Nothing?
If anyone has anything for me, but nope.
Alex?
You already, the only thing I was going to say is that we have that meeting with Placer. So any other questions though?
Does everybody know what Placer is? That's the one that does the data for traffic and we know what people are going and where they're leaving and going to and coming from and be a nice piece to have for development. Okay. Next up, we have public comment. Public? Can you please to comment?
I'm Sharon Beetson and I live here in town. Um, I have a concern. I have seen this twice happen at the new crosswalk at Broadway and Poplar Street, and that's where I live. There are two little girls that ride their little scooters and they push their buttons to be get across safely. And I'll be darned if the traffic doesn't stop for them. I got out of my car today and walked over to the corner so that the cars could see me. I was ready to go out in rage, but they stopped and let the girls cross safely. We need to police this better. I wish Pat was here. We need to make people aware that we've got crosswalks and people need to stop for them. I don't know whether the lights aren't bright enough. I know this at five o'clock, the traffic is really heavy and I know the sunshine is in your eyes, but you've got to be aware of what's around you. And if you, one of those little girls get hit, I'm going to be so upset and I'm sure their parents will be very upset too. But I'm just thinking it's ridiculous. We have these signs and we have the flashing lights and they're not obeying them. So I would like to have some police assistance.
I think a lot of it's a learned behavior too, you know, once people get used to them being there. It just takes time, but I don't know how you can force somebody to, it's just like stop signs and everything else. Very difficult to get.
Breaking the law.
Yeah, sure.
And we have what? Four pedestrians crossings on Broadway? We have four. And why is it the one that's down by me, they're not stopping?
I think it's not just yours. I think it's all of them.
I can assure.
Yeah, it's probably all of them.
I can assure you that there's more than just that one.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd actually received a an email from a citizen earlier today that reached out to end dot personally. And I then contacted end dot myself about the very same thing. So they are being notified. It is, the way I understand it is a state law. When somebody's in that crosswalk, you're supposed to stop, but
Yep.
I'm not an attorney or an officer, so I don't want to, I don't want to speak on that, but I believe that's the.
You'd be surprised the number of people don't know that.
I think they could.
You know, white stripes, stripes across the road, isn't that kind of telling you something?
Sure.
Well, if not, tell end dot to come back and make them bigger or make them wider, cover the whole section, do something to make people.
Think it would help if they had, they were red flashing. Yellow sometimes means caution. So I'm not sure if a lot of people know that they're supposed to stop. Oh, I know they're, but oh my God, that people speed, people do all kinds of stuff. I mean.
But I mean, this is pedestrians.
Oh, I know.
Somebody and oh my gosh, that would be just horrible. So anyway, that's my concern, my complaint, whatever you want to categorize it as, but I'm going to keep an eye on that.
We do, end dot does have that email. I think it's end dot for you. I think the more people that voice their concerns, it would help.
Okay.
I think it's white.
I think it's white.
It's maybe white and yellow. Yeah, like that. It, it should be caution and if there's somebody in the crosswalk, then it should be stop. Well, that's over the top, right? These are just on the sides.
Yeah, it doesn't go, it's not a hawk, it's not a hawk system.
The top, yeah.
That's a hawk system that's over there, I think.
Yeah, they're just the, the ones that are out here are just the signs that actually light up on the sides, on the sidewalk.
Actually, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea if we could get some kind of a notice from the police department. The town, we could do it. We could put something out there, but I think if it was came from the police department and let the town share it, I think it'd be good just to get the word out to make sure people know what the law is and what they can do and what they can't.
Say those little signs that, the little signs that are in that email. I've seen them more commonly now. They seem to be appearing everywhere because everybody seems to have the same problems.
Those wouldn't last in the middle of the road.
No, but they'll get run over. They do, and I've seen them get run over, but I do think that they, they do.
Two large loads come down Broadway today and they went right down the middle of the road.
Yeah.
In fact, there was a no left turn sign in front of the Auto Zone as you pull out of Auto Zone, and I think one of the pool trucks or I shouldn't blame it on the pool trucks, but some of the wide loads come through there and took it out.
Obviously, the hawk systems are so much better, but they cost so much more money to do. But when you're trying to slow down traffic like we've done too, you know, there's a lot going on there that of course, people that don't live here and travel through here don't look at everything like that, but.
And I will say too, that I know Pat's looking into the, the scooters that was brought up at the last meeting. So I know he is working on that, so. He'll probably come back to the council and we're, we're probably coming up on some cold weather. Hopefully that'll slow down.
I just saw three of them in the traffic coming into town tonight.
But, but yeah, definitely. I know he's working on that and he'll be bringing something forward here. Well, just to, yeah, we need an ordinance on if it's a little more clear.
It's, and it's hard to identify them.
And I think.
You know, I know.
Is currently working on it too. So I think it's just one of those things that's just now kind of catching everybody's attention and they're starting to, you know, get concerned about it and want to do something.
The Fisher's ordinance, you know, that Patrick gave us to look at, they're, you know, they've got them classified, but it's almost impossible to see that when they're zooming past you. I mean, you can't, because I've tried since he sent that email and I can't see nothing on them that tells me anything.
Well, you won't.
Other than get out of the way.
Let's just stop them and expect it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Speaking of crosswalk lights, I think the ones that Maryland, Michigan, no, I'm sorry, Maryland, no, Michigan and Maine. I don't think they work on one side of it, like on the it would be the west side lights. On the south side of the road, the button that you push, I don't think it flashes on that side.
I'll have them checked out in the morning.
Maine and Michigan.
I got you.
No more public comment? Yes?
I'm Dave Beetson, live on Popular Street in town, and I've just noticed we have a new member. I don't know anything about him. I want to know what Sean's from, where he's from, how, how you came into this position, other than it just being an empty seat and I'd know a little about you.
Well. Put you on the spot there. Yeah. Now, I, I grew up a little bit north of Lebanon, kind of in between Indy and Lafayette. Came down here. Basically, just the community, we ended up moving down here. Got a job closer to, uh, need to be closer to Indianapolis than that. And so I, I work at a engineering firm and we do mostly sewer systems, wastewater, but do kind of anything water related though. And what was your other questions?
How'd you end up getting here?
Uh, on the caucus, I wanted to still be a part of the community and, and was trying to get into police commission. I applied for a couple of times and the what was it? The RDC, I think, once. And so like you said, this seat came up and next thing to try to, try to get to be a part of everything, so.
What kind of engineering do you do?
I don't do any engineering, but the firm I work for is a civil engineer.
Okay.
Why don't you just take him out to lunch, Dave? Why don't you buy him lunch?
Thanks, Dave. Um, council members, Libby? Ryan?
I do not. Thank you.
I have nothing.
Uh, I just wanted to thank everybody that's up here, I think, pretty much, just for taking the time to answer whatever stupid questions I've had and
Stupid.
I may surprise you one more.
Okay, well, that's all right.
Yeah, just, just taking time to get me caught up and, and answer everything and try to get me up to speed as best I can. Appreciate it.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we need a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
Next up, go. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven twelve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for coming.